It is six o'clock, so we'll probably be meeting to order. Everybody's here except for Bruce and...
I think he has a commitment tonight.
Okay. Any motions to the agenda?
There aren't any.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve or to adopt agenda.
Second.
A motion by myself and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Approved, corrected minutes for September 13th, 2016, vagrants, school board meeting and ready to attack it. We have a motion from Kella.
Second.
And a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Financial reports, August 2016 Treasury reports, which begin with a packet. Bob, anything of the norm?
I know that Cheryl's looked at it too, so I think she looked at one that I also looked at, scoreboard one.
Yep.
Do you want to just go over that with them?
Yep, that was one that's coming to you on the payment district. Fair Play Scoreboard, $65,790. And there were also a couple of incidentals along with that Midwest Underground bill. Those monies already paid to us, so it's a wash.
So just a reminder to the board that for the scoreboards, the district has agreed to pay five payments of $5,000, so $22,000, no more. So we're getting the money that comes in for any other additional cost. And then I think the only other thing that I have is on the additionals for August 2016. Just if there's two negative ones there, those are just quoted checks we were having.
And that's on the...
On the additional August accounts payable checks.
Oh, okay. But we're taking care of the treasury department first.
Sorry, I jumped.
Yep. And then out of the treasury department, is there anything hot of the norm for that?
No, still pretty early. I don't have too many problems at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasure report.
I'll second.
Okay, so I got a motion from Kella and a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Now, let's go audit and approval for bills, additional August 2016 and September 2016 bills.
Sorry, I already did my initial, Cheryl already did her initial, sorry I jumped the gun.
That's fine.
The only other thing that jumped out at me was some iPads and... iPads, Air 2 and iPad Pros, Chromebooks, ProBooks, projectors, it's all going to be approved. Those are the only numbers that really jumped up that weren't everyday things. I would make a motion to approve this.
So I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Consent agenda. As you see in the consent agenda, review and consider approval of following teacher's changes for the master contract. So there's 13 of them. Jessica Panis, Jesse Rasmussen, Michael Gunther, Lauren Moulton, Mary Weindaker, Brooke Michael, Sarah Hadrad, William Pessi, Robin Spade, Jennifer Rogers, Colin Wolf, Derek Grace, and John Pfeifer are ones that are up for this time.
Yeah, I do have one that will become the next board meeting, but that person has also met all of the time requirements for it to come forward.
We've got a motion from Heidi. And then a second from Kella. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the proposed 2016 payable 2017 eleven minutes certification report and set the truth and taxation meeting for December 6th, 2016 at 10:00 PM.
And if, just to take a look at the addendum, just a reminder that we're not formally finalizing this until December. This is a preliminary one. We do need to set the truth and taxation meeting, so this will set that date. Preliminary due is due by September 30th, and we'll meet that deadline. Again, in December, we'll finalize it. Just a couple of things on the sheet I have. I do apologize for having it come late. Just, we were having some things that we wanted corrected before it came to the board. They had put some QCOM levy in there, and we're not levying for QCOM, but we're just getting the state aid for it. And they had put that on there, and we wanted some of that corrected before we brought it forward. The top part of it is really just adjustments. Our capital and operating funds adjusted a little bit because of declining enrollment from when they originally got the numbers. Health and safety, that's always a year behind. So if we levy more than that, they adjusted it down. Also, some of our unemployment, we levy so much for it, but it wasn't used. And when those types of things, integration, for instance, we levy some, it wasn't used, all of it wasn't used. And when that happens, they give it back to the people and reduce the levy. Okay, so those are really the main adjustments for that. And then when we get down to the bottom part, it's really a 3.9 increase. It's not quite that much because that surge, but it's really the long-term facility maintenance that has caused it to go up the most. It's going to go up this year and it's going to go up next year because of that. And just the way that the state put it together is that there's natural increases for the first three years of that maintenance piece. And the community had also, there's about nine, a little over $9,000 that they didn't levy for last year, but they're going to levy for school age care this year. So that's an increase there. So those are the two main things that really caused the increase for this year. For this levy. Any questions? And we have, in the past, can always have, levy to the maximum of what we're able to pull, and this would do that.
For that QCOM, how many districts do levy for that?
There are a number of districts that do levy for it. It's, I think it's $91 a student that the district can levy for. Over a couple of years, it's probably $150 or something like that. It's, I think when we put it in place, we didn't want to put any more levy on the community when we do it. But I would say that probably, it's probably half and half, I would guess. I would have to get the exact numbers and check with the state to make sure that there's something that do and there's something that don't. But certainly, if the board wants to look that way, it certainly does give us additional funds for staff development and helping the teachers. But again, that would have to be a board-approved piece. Right now, just again, all we do is take the state aid for it.
I guess my only thought is, you know, as we keep on moving down the whole process of electronics into classrooms and stuff like that, we know that, you know, that it's huge dependence on the teachers' ability to do their things, so...
And again, all research will point, if you want improved student achievement, just keep helping our teachers get better.
Right. But I think where, Jim, you know, we had some conversation about that already at the technology committee regarding some of that, you know, but...
Yeah, we're starting to move that way, just with our technology levy, that's part of it. I can certainly bring some facts back to the board in my next board report on how much it would generate, that type of thing, just so the board is aware.
But then, but that's, the other point would be that then we would really need to know what we're going to be spending those dollars on.
Oh, absolutely. But the QCOM plan itself, that does specify where the dollars are going. This would add additional dollars, and I think it would add additional resources. That would be up to the QCOM committee really to take a look at it and say, this is where we believe that we needed the most to help our teachers improve.
Well, it's something...
And I can certainly bring it up at the QCOM committee too. But I'll try to bring you back a little more information as far as on election. Again, at this point, it is not in our level. Any other questions?
Do we need a motion?
I'm looking for approval.
Yeah, I would approve it and add the truth and taxation meeting for December 6th.
Second.
So I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Number two, review and consider approval of authorizing Max Maughart to sign facility use agreement with Regions 3A and Region 5A. And I got that Haynesville area schools is a site to use for full-season events.
This is an annual thing now that we need to do if we're going to use our facilities for full season. In the past, I think the board has had me do it, but Max and I talked about it, it just seems a little silly that I have to get it and pass it on to Max and get it signed when then we're just authorizing Max to be able to do it.
Is the same way, so that the board doesn't have to approve every time something like this comes up?
Well, it's, in this case, every year they're going to do this. And talking to Max, he just says that it's what MDE is going to do every year. Would seem to me that it might be simpler if MDE would just say, okay, you're authorized in this for the next five years or so. But evidently, they want us to authorize it every year.
And does that have to be approved, approval by the board?
It does have to be approved by the board.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We had a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of a contract. Okay. Review and consider approval of a contract with J. Stephen Jones LLC for technology support for October 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
This is really Jonah, and we've used Jonah for the last few years, even when we were using him to help us with technology, even when he was in school. We've been paying a minimum wage. Quite frankly, having the discussion with the technology committee, Jonah certainly does more than, has a skill set that is more than what we thought is minimum wage. This did come to our technology committee, and we are recommending this as a committee. It would allow us to pay Jonah $15 an hour for a set number of hours, which is 650 hours. Now, we, Jonah and I worked a little bit on the contract to get a few things in there that I wanted, but that's really the gist of it, is that we're going to be under contract for him. He does help with the auditorium, he does help with our regular technology, he's a great asset. Particularly as we're making major adjustments, we're working much more, we're adding a lot more things. We truly believe that it's well worth the amount of money that we're going to spend to have Jonah continue to help us. And Jonah also does donate a lot of his time, even to the district, so...
I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
I'll second that.
And motion from Lou and a second from Kella.
And just one other, a couple of things just to also let you know, now, this, we will be contracting him much like we contract Jim. We don't pay any retirement benefits, we don't pay social security, we don't pay anything with this. We just pay him and set him up, then he takes care of the rest, so...
Any other further discussions?
The technology committee did look at this.
Yep.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that was understood.
Yeah, they're the ones that are coming forward and saying we recommend this.
Okay, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Personnel, review and consider approval of hiring Dana Fox food service worker for 3.5 hours per week effective, or per day, I'm sorry, per day, effective September 28th, 2016.
We will start her. I think she's already been subbing, waiting for the board approval. This is the first one, we're hoping to find somebody for the six-hour position, but we have not yet found one.
So who? The second.
I have a motion from Kella and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Informational reports.
Ms. Laura isn't not here, what has kind of happened is that we were a little shorthanded with our cross-country meet. So the last I saw, she was timing things when I left the cross-country meeting. So I helped out and tell, I had to get here for the board meeting, and she said she would make it if she could. And she may walk in the door before we get done, but I know that it was a flip of the coin on whether she'd make it or not.
Okay. WCDD board meeting report.
We met September 19th in Albany. And Lori went over some of the reports of program updates, Beacon Program, and the ALC, and the B2. And at, at, at Melrose, the ALC, we have 43 students, which is pretty high. There's 16 from Albany, 16 from Melrose, six from Haynesville, and five from SOCC Center, for a total of 43. And the Beacon Program, we had a total of 13. There's four from Albany, three from Melrose, and we have one from Haynesville, and five from SOCC Center. And then burst till three, we have five from Albany and none being evaluated. Melrose has four and one being evaluated. Haynesville has four and three being evaluated. SOCC Center has 10 and two, and a total of 23 and six. And she talked about what happens during the audit, there's a list of things that we have talked about or they have discussed. And there was a short agenda, and that's about all, unless you can think of something else.
No, I think that was pretty much, it was apparently a short agenda, if that made...
And our next meeting will be in Melrose, November 21st. Is that it?
All right, we can leave.
District Y Technology meeting, myself and Bob were at those. Forgot my little cheat sheets, I just gone after the agenda that was provided. Some housekeeping things that we took care of right away is just basically went through when needs are needed, if it still works for everybody and stuff like that. But then Jim and Jonah gave us the update on the work up there over the summer and stuff, and where they are at with it. And they've accomplished a lot of different things through the summer. And then also with the E-rate that has been awarded to us, we have not yet received that yet, so...
We have applied, but I think they're on their 14th wave of things, and this is around the time that we got the last E-rate alone.
Garrett also talked to us a little bit about the student internship, and he's hoping to make that program grow. As you know, that Jonah was a prodigy of that program. And then also Mr. Bertram up there, he's also part of that. So there's other different kids that are in the programs that are helping out with that technology. And hopefully, there will be more that's been inspired, you know, as Garrett gets around and starts talking to them. So more to come on that. We also talked about some surveys that are going to be going out to elementary for, just to figure out what the students' parents have at home for internet access versus computers versus all kinds of different things. So that was talked about, and trying to decide what route is the best, especially when you start looking at one-on-one initiatives where basically we're, you know, using computers for most of the homework and stuff like that, so... So that's, you know, in progress. We also talked about the different features of the smart board in televisions, as the smart boards. Mr. Spanier has one of the very first ones that ever been put in this district. And he's running into some little issues with it, and so we're trying to figure out which technology is going to be best fitting in some of the different areas. Because obviously, math is very instructural, they're visual and all that, their stuff, so wherever maybe English isn't so much. So we're trying to figure out which technology is going to go best with which classes and stuff like that. And the teachers are going to be, obviously, the main key point of that. And then we give them the resources to get to the better, to bettering them in that area. So we also talked about hotspots, you know, for connectivity. We talked a little bit about that for buses, but we don't know exactly if we're going to go that road or not.
We, yeah, I think we'll be meeting, I talked to Mike a little bit about that today. And we'll set up a meeting to have some discussion about that particular piece, to see what it contains. There are some grants out there now. They tend to get gobbled up by bigger schools right away, but I think we'll certainly take a look at that as we go into next year. Probably will be something we'll do this year, we'll probably just gather information this year.
And Garrett and Jonah are looking at, are they still going to go do that tour of Alexandria's district?
They are, yep, next Monday.
Just to see what's, what kind of technology that they're using in the different programs that they're offering over there? Because there, there are no one-to-one initiative, I can't remember.
I think part of Alex's...
Okay, is what? One-to-one, the one-to-one initiative. So, so then we also talked a little bit about the media policy, and we're trying to figure out what we're going to do with that. Garrett is going to come back to us with that. And then we talked about Jonah's contract, which we just approved tonight. And so I think that's pretty much of adjusted, the minimum wage, anything.
Those are the main pieces that we've covered.
So... Okay. Staff development, Bob.
Yeah, we just had men for the first meeting really talk about strategic plan and all that fits into the forms and things, so there's some changes to the forms that we're looking at, so that at all times end. We talked about budget in all of the district, in the elementary, in the secondary, and a few things that people have been doing. And then also what, how we're going to receive with the awards. Last year, we went through the chamber to do our reward to staff, and we believe that at least based on what we got, we'll continue to do that. So those are the main things that we talked about.
Okay, you take the next one, administrative meeting.
Just a few things, and it's hard to believe, almost a month into the school year, done already. You know, I just, hard to say, which of course means fall's going to be upon us, and my favorite season, winter, will be there. But it's just as, just it. I have talked to staff, and they're, I think some of them are even starting to wonder where the time has gone already. On our webpage, just be aware of that, we placed a link to what's called the St. Cloud Times, it's called SPART, Igniting Your Future. It's an initiative by the Times meeting to provide students and parents with additional information about career options in and around central Minnesota. So I would encourage you to go on our website, take a look. There's going to be some nice articles that are put in there through the Times. Staff Development Day on Monday, October 3rd, no school for students, I'm sure they're very upset about that. There's an early release on October 19th for staff development, then we'll also, then we run into MEA break, which is October 20th and 21st. So on Monday, we are taking our complete staff to the St. Cloud Tech College. We're going to take a look at all the programs they offer, we're also going to take a look at their medical piece, I haven't seen that tour. We're going to gather some information about careers and give the staff, I think, just a great day. Certainly, if the board is interested in going, they can either accompany us or meet us at the St. Cloud Tech College. We're also going to invite some businesses to accompany us if we want, if they want to come.
October 20th.
It's, no, it'd be the October 3rd, this Monday. Yep, that's the all-day one there. The other ones, we haven't finalized yet. The 20th and 21st have MEA break, so there's just no school, but it's not staff development. There are the release on the 19th, that's staff development, that's 1:00. QCOM is finishing up some things that we need to get done for MDE, MDE by Friday. We have a meeting on Thursday, hopefully to finish that up and get all the information that they need, so that everything is where we need to be on Friday. We're finishing up our, this week, our response to MDE for the food service audit, and we'll, major things there. I think one of the bigger things is that I just need to put the wellness committee back together, and we need to update the wellness policy and a few other things, but we're responding back to MDE on that. Just a reminder to the board that first meeting in October, we're going to bring our MCD scores, we'll have a presentation on that. Also, our strategic plan, action steps. Something that Max will be bringing to the board next week, he'll bring the information is that AHI co-opted vote to have a cut policy. He'll bring that information to the board at the next meeting. All right. Going to St. Cloud, I already mentioned that. I've developed a draft of the 2017-18 school calendar, so I'll be sending that out to staff here not too long, and there's a few things I need to check yet. And then we'll have a meeting confirmed, so whoever's on that committee, be aware of that, I'll be setting up a meeting with staff to take a look at that, and I'll be gathering input from staff. Not a lot of changes of the calendar I put together, it's kind of just based on this one in the same timeframe, but I'm sure we'll get some suggestions on ways that could make the calendar better. Also, if you're on the policy committee, I'll be setting up a meeting for that, there's a few policies that we want to get to. I also need to set up a world's best workforce committee meeting, in fact, I have set that up, that's for October 5th, so if you're on that one, be there. And again, I'll be putting the wellness committee together because we do need to update that wellness policy, we don't meet all of their requirements by this date. And then one last thing I would like the board to reconsider, maybe thinking about pulling paperless here at these meetings. If you would take things electronically, we would save the postage anyway, even if we brought paper copies to the meeting for you to look at. So maybe at the next meeting, give me your thoughts on it? You know, we could, you know, whatever we got.
Can I make a motion already?
Pardon me?
Can I make a motion already?
I think, yes, it wouldn't be a motion, it would just be something we would do. I think we'd need to set up, the way that we're going to get tablets to you guys, but right now with cards and stuff, we could certainly pull seven tablets for every meeting and give you a tablet and show you all how to log into it, so you have everything right on a tablet in front of you.
We could just bring our own tablet, right?
You could also certainly bring your own tablet.
I'm agreeing with that.
You know, something we've talked about kind of on and off, and we just have never made a different move, so I thought we'd at least continue to have that discussion. Certainly, if it's not something the board wants to pursue, I'm fine with that. But I certainly wouldn't have issues not sending postage or spending postage to send the paper out to the board. Why don't you think about it, and then maybe we can talk about it next meeting, hearing reports. And we could make an exception, I suppose, to...
No exceptions.
Especially, could we kind of, like, try it for next meeting and just see, especially for the ones that are maybe a little hesitant?
Let me, I'll tell you this, let me talk to Garrett and Jonah, and I'll see what we can set up, and if we want, if it's easy enough to set up and where we can get people trained in, or maybe even at the next meeting, I just bring them. And then you take a look at it, and we show you maybe how, then you would go into it and do that.
Like Ken said, we don't have to, we can use our own, right?
You could, I think you could use your own, but let me check on all of that before we make the jump.
I would just need a wifi, I need access to your wifi.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, so. I, again, I learned a long time ago, you won't say yes unless you absolutely know that it's a yes. So let me double check, and I'll just send you a text and say, bring your own device or not bring your own device, and we'll go from there.
I still kind of prefer paper copies, but I don't have any problem at all with putting them up at home.
Yeah, the, the biggest cost for us is the post each.
Yeah, and considering, not this time, the time before, it took eight days for it to get from Paintsville to Howick.
We had no responsibility for that one.
That's a, that's a long trip.
And for some of ours, where we're doing the handbooks and stuff, it's a considerable packet that we send out to board.
Leaking the Pony Express had a land horse.
Well, we, we have seen some interesting things on occasion. So why don't I, I'll just get some information, send you just informational type of things out, and we'll continue to have that discussion.
Hey, one, one other question here, is there a reason that the enrollment dropped so much from the beginning?
You remember when I, when you came in, or when I talked about enrollment last time?
Yeah.
I said, just be aware, the first couple of weeks are not there. Part of what we have is, we straightened out as our PSEO kids, 'cause they were all on there at that time, and we, we only get about, it's, it's just about three of the students total that we have come in, 'cause a lot of our PSEO kids are, are in our building for part of the time, but not the whole time. Not all of our kids go completely out, but even if they're gone half the time, really that's half the students, not a whole student that's in there. So when you take a look at your enrollment sheets now, you have the PSEO number down, and don't think I dropped, show me yours just for a second, Cheryl.
2.4.
I'll explain it. If you look at that now, this is not added to those numbers, okay? So you have, have to add the 2.4 number to the enrollment number, 'cause it's not there right now. And to, to make it so that you have kind of understand how many students, really we get 2.4 out of the seven students. So the first number's what we get, the second number's how many people are using the PSEO program. But those numbers have not been added, so you have to add a couple more numbers to the top. And just as a reminder to the board, those first two weeks of school are really when we find out who is coming, who isn't coming. Because they, we may not even know that they're not coming to us for a few days or even a week, 'cause we don't get any notification from other schools. You know, the way we find out a lot of times is people send us forms requesting information. Then we know that they're, they're leaving and going some other place. But in this case, part of it was that PSEO, all those numbers were on that first piece, and we're not getting all those students, or at least all of the time of those students. But we are still ahead of what we projected, which is still good.
Okay, any other sharing?
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn. Second. I got a second from Randy. Any further discussions? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. All the same sign and carry.